The Wedge Life Podcast is sponsored by Minneapolis 311. Email, you can email Minneapolis 311. I don't know if a lot of people know that you can send them an email. You don't have to call, you don't have to download the app. I find it very easy to email Minneapolis 311. And you can find, you can find that email address on the website. We're not actually sponsored by Minneapolis.
I'm like, that is news. Uh, wow. I'm pointing that.
You were about, you were about to send an angry email to the chief financial officer. Like, why are we wasting city money on the Wedge Life Podcast?
I mean, we are doing other ridiculous things like who asked for French fries with fry? That's happening on city dollars. I would not mind if 311 also had a really great podcast show that they were supporting too. So.
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the West neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
And I will start with how are you? And I mean it, I truly mean it. I really do care how you are.
Since, since being elected, just in general.
Uh, you know, how's today going or this week? How are things?
Um. You know, this week, it really feels like we're coming full circle once again. Like we're constantly in this, um, feedback loop that we can't get out of. So, you know, we're approaching the third anniversary of George Floyd's murder by Minneapolis police tomorrow. And, you know, the fact that just today in Pogo, we're literally having conversations with our city attorney about, you know, why it would not be appropriate to promote or rotate the former chief of the Minneapolis police interim Amelia Huffman into a position that will oversee or help implement the consent decree when they were complicit in the very practices that were listed in the consent decree. And then, you know, the uphill fight we had on Tuesday around just getting a fiscal analysis of the consent decree. So in so many ways, like I know the anniversary is supposed to be a marker, at least for individuals like myself. It serves as a reminder of what we went through and all the events, preventable events and actions that could have been employed to prevent George Floyd's death. And to see that our city continues, and let me not say that, to see a segment of our city leadership continue to double down and act as if nothing has happened. And then probably going to come forward tomorrow with lots of honorary and symbolic gestures and be like, yes, we are moving in the right direction. It's just crazy. But I will say this week also has just been a really good highlight of, I'm glad I don't ground my hope and optimism inside of city hall, because I would have been easily demoralized a long time ago. But in grounded it by the people who are continuing to advance change, like the East Phillips Farm, Epi folks, you know, and getting a historic victory, a land back up victory, you know, for that, that movement. And for the Minneapolis community and setting a new tone on how we approach our climate crisis. And how do we center those who've been racially impacted, you know, by our climate decisions or lack of action around climate change? And that gives me hope that, that this week, that was the solidifier of, okay, this is why we're here. This is why I'm here.
Okay, before we get too far, I'm going to say this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest is Ward Two Councilmember Robin Wonsley, who, like all council members this year is running for reelection. So I want to go to a thing you said. So I just watched the Amelia Huffman thing. And so the city attorney had a reasonable seeming argument, like I also see your argument, but like, this is someone with decades of experience, like knows the policies and will be able to do. And for listeners, let's say what the, the position is, a policy reform advisor to assist the city with implementing our agreements with the State Department of Human Rights, the DOJ, when that comes through. So maybe specifically, like, why is Huffman the wrong choice for, for that position?
And I reiterate the comments that I shared in committee into city attorney Anderson. The position in itself is not a problem. In fact, it's one of the provisions that's included in our legal settlement that says that departments outside of MPD should be part of the process of launching their own respective implementation team. So there is nothing wrong procedurally or technically. In fact, it will help us be in compliance. But getting into the aspect of a qualified candidate and why I bet the question of why we could not pursue, as we're doing with so many other positions, do a national search so we can get the highest quality candidate possible. And one, and this is what I want to emphasize, that comes without particular baggage. And that baggage, in the case of Amelia Huffman, as I named, is as the interim chief over the Minneapolis police and even beforehand, but let's name events that happened during her tenure. We had the police contract come forward, January of last year, the first contract that, you know, was brought forward after George Floyd's murder. So there was lots of anticipation and hope that it would be packed with tons of provisions. And at least on the city side, that would double down on accountability. Instead, we saw financial incentives be increased. There was no mention around changes to discipline. There was nothing that really emphasized, you know, the, the need for more accountability and stringent guidelines around accountability. And who are at the table? Who is at the table in, in discussing those provisions? It's the mayor, it's the chief, it's the city attorneys. So Chief Huffman had a very critical role to play in that and decided to use the authority she had as acting chief to not leverage her authority to move forward the very things that quote unquote, she, she's aware of. Many of the policies that are now mandated on our legal settlement, she could have absolutely moved forward with trying to integrate some of those into the police contract, did no such thing. And then let's fast forward to February, where all of us unfortunately saw that horrible body cam footage of MPD officer shooting and killing Amir Locke while he slept in the early mornings. And, and instead of coming out, you know, and saying, whoa, let's take a pause. We understand, you know, this is a shock to the community. We're going to do our due diligence to seek out and enact justice on this matter. We saw a press conference instead where, you know, there was tons of deflection from Mayor Frye and interim chief Amelia Huffman. And then we're not even going to pair that with hours before that press conference. When folks were asking for the body cam footage to understand what the hell happened. We had MPD, which, you know, through their media releases has to go through the chief. They released a photo through the Star Tribune and several other media outlets that showed a picture of Amir Locke's gun that basically said that he threatened the police and therefore was warranted or of the, the shots that he received that ultimately ended his life. There was no pushback after the body cam footage showed that that was not true. He did not aim in a malice way towards officers. Our acting chief did not say, oh, let me correct that. That was a mishap or that we should never do that, especially in light of, let's say, George Floyd, where they did the same thing, you know, after Derek Chauvin killed him and released that media statement saying that it was a medical incident. Again, we're seeing the same patterns. And then let's, okay, follow after Amir Locke, another tragedy and, you know, harmful act that the police carried out. Let's fast forward to the, the expose that many journalists, you know, brought forward around chief Amelia Huffman promoting officers with extensive complaint backgrounds into field trainer positions. That's a pattern practice that's listed in the legal settlement. That is how we got Derek Chauvin in the position of being able to execute and unleash George Floyd in front of the world. He was promoted into a field training position. He was doing training that day, even though we already know he had extensive complaint background too. So if you just take those three incidents that happened, just, you know, earlier this year under the leadership of Amelia Huffman, it's very clear that many of the patterns and practices that I'm very sure she's aware of, but that has deemed our department, police department to be a non-compliance with human rights law and to be, most importantly, racist, misogynistic and violent. Why would we promote or trust that the individual who was complicit in carrying out the very provisions that were now mandated to fulfill? Why would we trust that this individual will be able to do so in this position when they couldn't do it in the ultimate position of authority as the chief, acting chief of the police department? So I want to put that in, in, in light of why I asked our city attorney to really think very critically, because they are the, the ultimate decision-making body of who gets to be hired into this position. But I implored a city attorney Anderson to really think very critically. Here's the opportunity and there's a need for us to rebuild trust with the public when it comes to this consent decree and how we move our public safety initiatives forward. Would you really, in light of what I just shared and what is out there? Do you really want to move forward with this particular candidate and then expect the public to see the city is taking this legal settlement seriously? If that is your goal and it's up for them to decide how they want to move forward.
So I remembered what, I remember the other thing that you said that I wanted to talk about. It was, uh, it reminded me of the conversation we had last year. What, do you remember when last year we talked? Was it summertime? Or no, two years ago.
Did we talk, John? I feel like it's just been recent.
It was two years, it was the election year, two years ago for this podcast.
Oh, my God. Wow, that feels, the election year feels like something out of like, like galaxy years, like something trilling years ago. But it's, I think it was around the, I'm not even going to front, that whole year was a blur. But we did talk during my candidacy time.
So one of the things you said that like raised my eyebrows is you were talking about this whole inside, outside. Like you were just saying now, I'm not putting my hope in city hall. And I remember last time you were talking about like, I'm not as concerned with things that are happening in the council chambers. This is when you were running. And I'm like, well, you're running to be a legislator. Like you should concern yourself with that. That should be like the biggest thing. And may, maybe I was wrong, I don't know. But it has turned out in the end that, uh, I've been disappointed with the output of, uh, of, of city hall and city council. And so tell me, what, what is making you, you've mentioned a few things. You mentioned the, the East Phillips Farm stuff, but what is your strategy for using what's going on outside city hall? Because eventually you have, you have to get something from city hall, right? Eventually that's the end, that's the end goal, right? And so what's the, what's the outside strategy for making that happen?
And I think, at least from the context that I recall, when I think we had that first, you know, interview, I grounded that response is, and we know in most, you know, democratic, and actually we can expand it, but democratically run or Democrat-run cities or typical liberal philosophy is you try to win over your colleagues and that is, that is the vehicle in which you create change. You hear, you know, very transactionally, you know, what the public want, what's your community wanting? Often, you know, that is the traditional political landscape, you know, politicians. And this is why there's been, as you just highlighted, such a deep-seated distrust and justifiably against, you know, our politicians, against city council members, against the mayor. Because there is a consistent pattern and practice of politicians not really taking concerns as brought forward by ordinary people when it comes to their housing conditions, when it comes to environmental conditions, when it comes to their economic or workplace conditions. We often don't see the, the concerns and often brilliant solutions that working class people already have, have already expended, you know, tremendous amount of labor concocting and creating. We don't often take that serious. What we do take serious, and let me say we, but in these traditional political spaces is, how do I do a horse trade? How do I scratch her back how you scratch mine? And I came in as a socialist, knowing that the way in which throughout history, in this country, that we've created transformative change, it has had to been through a strong, independent, multiracial movement. And being able to have allies and champions inside of our political organizations like city hall, but they have to work in tandem. And in traditional political landscapes, we don't see that authentic partnership happening. And that's why I raised the case of East Phillips Farm. For many years, that, again, that was a fight that stretched 10 years. I only came in the, the last three years, as most of my other council members did, into this fight. But seven years prior to us coming in, no one listened to them. No one took inside of city hall, the concerns and the needs of our East Phillips residents, the vision that they have for their site. No one took that serious. In fact, they did everything that they could to repress, to silence, to deflect. And then when you had a cadre of council members, and I do want to highlight council members particularly that was endorsed by a socialist organization that understood that their task is to be grounded in our movements, in the needs and everyday realities of working class people. And when our everyday people were saying, the city has ignored us on our vision and our plans on this site. We said, oh, bet? Well, that has to be our priority if we're truly beholden to the public. And if we're going into city hall to use every tool in our toolkit to work on behalf of our constituents and working class people, that means we need to use every tool in that toolkit to make the East Phillips Farm happen. And throughout this year, you've seen council member Chavez particularly throw everything and the kitchen sink at the wall and has, you know, worked closely with colleagues like myself, other county partners and stakeholders, our statewide lawmakers, you know, shout out to our Minneapolis delegation who helped get this across the finish line. But it took that type of effort and that effort could not have happened if we didn't have council members that weren't grounded in our social movements outside of city hall, who knows best, you know, what issues are most impacting them? So that is the part that gives me hope. That to me points to the meaningful or effectiveness and opportunities that we can have on council. If we do see that as the model of how we create change in our city. And I understand, you know, there's been lots of justifiable, like, you know, concerns about what is really the use of council? I look at Epi and say, that's the use. I look at our police contract, that council member Ellison and I worked on very early in my term as co-chairs of the Policy and Government Oversight Committee. And where we brought unprecedented transparency around that process and has essentially created a new process around how we do negotiations around the police and how that centers community members and did so in partnership with groups like the Minneapolis for a Better Contract. I see moments like that as saying, this is, you know, this being council is still a prime vehicle for advancing change that's going to benefit and uplift working class people. And the vibes around it being not a site of change, I get that, I understand that. But honestly, the issues with council has never been what we can do under government restructure. It's what do we have the will to do? It's never been that. So if we have the will to do things, we could do all sorts of great things like East Phillips Farm. And when we don't, thank you to the community groups that hold our feet to the fire like East Phillips did to make sure that we're delivering on the things that we know is going to make everyone have a viable life in our city, a equitable life in our city.
Let's take a step back and think about things that are not in the headlines. Things that people are maybe emailing you about, things that people are complaining about on Nextdoor, undercover issues that we haven't heard about. What's going on in Ward Two that we might be surprised to learn people are very concerned about? That haven't got any headlines?
The thing is, I think that's another great opportunity around council, because we have the ability to use the everyday complaints to advance bigger policy decisions. And I will take, for instance, my council and council member, Aisha Chuck Ties of efforts to advance a municipal sidewalk planning program. My very first winter in office, I received numerous complaints about the conditions of our sidewalks, as did every other council member. That was like the number one complaint, 311 complaint that every council member receives across all 13 boards. And apparently that was, that was increasingly, you know, a norm, that we were getting these heightened complaints about unclear sidewalks during our winter. I could have easily probably like other council members did, because this is not a new issue, you know? We live in an Arctic jungle, like sidewalks have been crappy for quite some time during our winter conditions. But, you know, my office said, hey, we're getting substantially large increase of, of complaints about this in my ward. We need to do something about this. And again, using everything in my toolkit, one of my duties is the budget. Council holds the purse of the city. So I knew that budget session, you know, we were going to be advocating for a pilot looking at what does it look like to do a municipal sidewalk program? We worked with all the members of the Public Works Infrastructure Committee, the leadership on that committee, as well as Public Works leadership too, where we all said, they knew this was going to be a priority. And how do we link this to building a green workforce that's going to give jobs to, you know, our residents, specifically our younger residents and those that are in our green zone? So making sure that we're prioritizing black and brown and indigenous youth and bringing them into the, the expansion of our green workforce that we're cultivating at the city. So everyone knew this was going to be a priority. So we knew, cool, we used our committee tools and now the budget, let's line it up. Brought a budget amendment to do a pilot on this. Council members wrote it down. I could have easily been like, oh, whoop, whoop, you know, I tried. Oh, well, no, because my, we still got complaints. And then couple that with the largest like snowfall in, in the city's history. Those complaints quadrupled. And then as I named, my sister, she broke her leg last fall while walking her dog in North Minneapolis. So supporting my sister in her recovery, because her leg was broken in three places, like still having to tend to my own family around, you know, the impacts of having unclear sidewalks. So we knew like it wasn't a done deal. And we worked with, you know, community groups, shout out to Our Streets Minneapolis, to bring forward a legislative directive that says, actually, we need more information on how to realize an actual municipal sidewalk plan program that prioritizes the pedestrian priority network and looks at how do we link the building of our green workforce also in that reparative work? So things like that, we have the ability to use 311 complaints to advance really major key policy initiatives. And then directly, you know, align our funding to be able to support that and sustain that work. So it's things like that. I also want to shout out, you know, Glendale Town Homes. They just celebrated, which is in my ward in Prospect Park, one of the largest, you know, and, and I think oldest public housing portfolios in the city. They just celebrated their 70th, 70th anniversary last week. And, you know, I think of them and the work that our office is now doing in partnership with BET. Shout out to Samantha Pree Gonzalez, who's the president of the Board of Estimates and Taxation to advance a public housing levy this year, a full maximum public housing levy. So that, you know, public housing like that in my ward, they can go and celebrate another 70 years of existence. And don't have to worry about, you know, being privatized, because we don't let the 210 current, 210 million dollar capital backlog that we have right now, you know, quadruple, because we haven't done any serious funding to address those issues. And then next thing you know, 70 years later, is, will that still maintain public ownership? Will we have a Glendale Town Homes? So we have the ability to leverage things like that, because I do want the townhomes to be there for another 70, 100 years, 200 years, because public housing is the gold standard when it comes to housing affordability in our city. So I even think of situations, situations like that, like just a, a beautiful, you know, anniversary event. Same with P-Car. We have a lot of, whoo, active, uh, Minneapolis people and equity climate, like advocates in my ward. All throughout my ward, we just got a stack of postcards a couple of days ago from our constituents that's leading that work and is saying that the city needs to do better when it comes to our climate action goals. And because they stayed on us, my office introduced P-Car, the Pollution Control Annual Registration that leveraged fees and collects revenue from a source of pollutants. And my office is advocating that we include the social cost of carbon in our fee schedule so we can raise additional revenues. And something simple like that, you know, just thinking of the tens of millions of dollars that we have the potential to collect through that social cost of carbon, coupled with the other pollutant fees, we could create a just transition fund. And I think, you know, if we had that just transition fund, just like two or three years ago, Epi would not have had to do or go through the fiery hoops that they went through over the past, you know, several months at the state Capitol. They could have had a fund at the city that they could have tapped into for resources. And I think of the need to create that fund as community members, especially in North Minneapolis, are organizing for the closure of a Herc incinerator. They're going to be wanting to know what, what can they do in, in lending or expanding collective ownership over that land and doing reparative climate work, considering that incinerator has had disastrous health impacts for, not surprisingly, one of our most black, you know, residential neighborhoods in the city. So I think of things like that, like the things in my ward, you know, is not just isolated when it comes to housing, when it comes to environmental justice, the things that are happening there, they're happening all across the city. And like folks in my ward, people are organizing and bringing council members like myself, tons of brilliant solutions. And my job is really to go into city hall and figure out, okay, what, what can I throw at the wall today to like advance that? And that's the fun part. I mean, it don't look like it from like y'all clips often, and it's not. It's, it's a constant bombardment of psychological and political warfare. And you only get a glimpse of it of what we, you know, endure on the dais. Every cycle, because my office and I credit, you know, my team, shout out to Celeste and Ghanani. We bring something forward every cycle and have been since I've gotten inaugurated, because we came here to do work for working class people and I never, you know, fall back on my promises. So every cycle, we have faced tons of pushback and resistance before we even get to the dais, before you get to see people yelling decorum and trying to silence and, and shut me down. So I just credit, you know, my residents for continuing to support us in that process as we go and push back against, you know, the repressive forces that exist inside of city hall to do the change that our residents elected us to do.
So talking of the snow clearing, the sidewalk snow clearing, what's realistic? Do, do, are you optimistic something can happen? Have you spoken, do you have a sense there's a majority on the city council to do anything? You talked about the pedestrian priority network, so I assume it would be something like, you know, we'll start, start with a smaller group of the most high-traffic sidewalks and do it that way. People complain about costs. So I just wonder like, what's a realistic timeline? And also, is it even, is it even something that you think the city council is willing, willing to pass?
Again, that's why I'm never, I never tied the work that I've done and people call me like, you know, crazy and, and just unrealistic for a number of reasons. And I'm glad I have not taken that lightly. People told me we couldn't get 1.2 million dollars for fire sprinklers. We made it happen. So like, I, you know, we already had pushback. I think you all maybe have seen, you know, at the Wedge Live, the article when we first, me and council member Chuck Tye brought forward or announced that we were doing a legislative directive for municipal sidewalk plowing. You have Mayor Frye coming out, giving, you know, uh, press clips saying that that's not even in his top five or top 10 priorities, like, no, we're not doing this. We got tons of pushback from Public Works leadership at the time. Council members saying, this is also not doable. We can't do this, it's going to cost too much. It's always those answers. Every time council is like, let's actually move forward with a solution or a proposal that's actually grounded in like our reality, like 311 data, for instance. People are always going to say like, no, we can't do it. But when we like want to create a new office of community safety and we want to figure out how to create a leadership structure that oversees it and for some reason think the best way to do that is to pay, you know, the leader of that organization 300 something thousand dollars more than the governor, we find a way to do that. Like the city finds all sorts of ways to do things that really ain't helpful for our residents. But when it comes to things like sidewalk plowing, they're like, no, it's too much. So in line of that, I totally expect Public Works to come forward with a report on June 15th, because I believe that is when they're going to be giving their final presentation and report about their findings that we requested in our legislative directive. They're going to absolutely say it's unreasonable, we shouldn't do it, it's not, you know, it's not fiscally sound and all sorts of things. But this is why I'm very glad we had the inclusion of, as you just highlighted, what would it look like to do this phased in over several years and making sure we're prioritizing our most high, you know, trafficked areas where, you know, transit riders, where students, where our seniors, where, you know, residents with small children that, you know, require strollers? What if? What if we looked at our already established, you know, pedestrian priority network and used as a basis of phasing in a municipal, you know, program? We did the same thing with the Minneapolis, I mean, with the uh, minimum wage, we phased it in over a period of time. Like let's, you know, figure out how do we build a sound operational structure and policy structure that supports the rollout of that. So regardless of what the findings say, um, that is what I'm pressing forward with. I'm pretty sure, you know, council member Chuck tie is excited to continue collaborating with that work too. And regardless, like we'll figure out the funding side, um, um, as we enter into these budget uh, discussions. But um, I would hope all council members, based off of the three one one data that showed, again, across all thirteen wards. This is a key priority. We need to take substantial action on that this year. We can't just wait until next year and be like, oh, no, let's, uh, uh, no, you can't do that. And this is also why people think we are so ghetto at this. Like, we always wait to the last minute to act like, no, we can't believe we had a lot of snow. We're in Minneapolis. Climate change, like we had an opportunity to do something proactively about this. This is us taking proactive action.
Uh, this is the part of the episode where I say, uh, Wedge Live, the Wedge Live podcast is sponsored by Minneapolis Three One One. Email, you can email Minneapolis Three One One. I don't know if a lot of people know that. You can send them an email. You don't have to call. You don't have to download the app. I find it very easy to email Minneapolis Three One One. And you can find, you can find that email address on the website. We're not actually sponsored by Minneapolis.
I'm like, that is news. Uh, wow.
You were about, you were about to send an angry email to the chief financial officer, like, why are we wasting city money on the Wedge Live podcast?
I mean, we are doing other ridiculous things, like who asked for french fries with fry? That's happening on city dollars. I would not mind it. Three one one also had a really great podcast show that they were supporting too. So.
Did, did the french fries with fry thing become like a debate at city hall? Was that uh, supported with city money?
Yes, that's happening on city time. It's on the city of Minneapolis website. If you go, it's for just search french fries with fry.
Right, I, I saw the, I saw the Facebook post and video. I just didn't know that it, did it ever happen? Like I remember the promo video. I don't remember if they actually released any episodes.
Oh, they have several episodes now. Uh, there, there are several episodes up on the Facebook page. Um, not a big uh, media campaign around that. I will also know council members were not informed about that. If that's the case, the council should consider doing their own respective uh, podcasts too. But uh, yeah, uh, that, that was brought forward, at least to my attention, I think through, actually y'all, Wes Live on Twitter. I was like, wait, what? This is a thing? And it's not campaign related? This is you, this is actually using city dollars? Okay.
So if you were going to release a series of social media, if you're going to create your own internet TV show with city money, what would the title be? What would the fast food themed title be? Whoppers with Wonsley?
Wonsley? Oh, no. What is this? Olives, olives with Rob, what, what's eggs with Robin? Um, I'm trying to think. Having had like one of my favorite, you know, brunch spaces in, in, in my ward, like who has the best eggs or something like that? Uh, what's something else Ward two people like? Uh, we, we need more ice cream spots in Ward two. I'm not going front. So I would be like, ice cream with, I don't know, but.
Baskin Robbins with.
Baskin Robbins, exactly, exactly. Um, but yeah, I, I would probably go with eggs with Robin or something like that.
So in April, I think April, you brought that staff direction related to like, uh, the, uh, what was it? The fiscal impact of the settlement agreement. And then that failed, came back, you figured out like, what is information that already exists? And you like sorted it, you mentioned you sorted it out with like city attorney's office and uh, everyone else. I forget the long list of people you sorted out with in that past. And so I wonder like, how do you foresee that information, getting that information affecting your deliberation over the police budget? Because that was the, the reason that, uh, that you and other council members said it was important to have that because you vote on the budget, you have the power of the purse. Why, why is it important to have that information on the fiscal impacts of the settlement agreement with the state and the DOJ?
Um, I would encourage residents listening to this, like we got a really shocking presentation last week from um, our um, financial department about the twenty twenty four uh, projected budget. Um, and in that, we are clearly walking into, if you had like the, the bar graph up where it had our expenses here and then our revenue like here. So basically it was like, y'all ain't got no money, don't do no new programming or anything. Um, and then they went into one part that broke down, okay, what are some of our major expenses um, in um, our budget. And of course, immediately the largest pieces was around liability. Um, and workers' compensation, which we know are pretty clearly tied to the police department. So we know basically, the reason why we ain't got no money, the reason why uh, the mayor's office is proposing and has proposed uh, uh, over a, a six point, you know, two, six point three percent uh, property increase over the, you know, ne- next two years for last year and this year, is to be able to pay out for the misconduct of one department. Um, so, um, when I asked our uh, budget director, um, you know, Robert, so these very shocking figures that you're presenting to us, does this include any information around the consent decree? Like, is this including the information that you all shared with us last year that said, well, here's what we're estimating the, the budget will be or, or financial ramifications of the consent decree? Because I will highlight too with my fiscal analysis. There was literally nothing new in the content. We literally was asking for existing information that they presented last year. But Palmasano wasn't filling it at the time. So, uh, like, we literally was like, okay, we'll connect with more departments who are ready to present this information because they already had it. So we were able to get across this past Tuesday. But nevertheless, like, it was very disappointing to see like our budget project, projections. And know that it has no fiscal analysis of how the consent decree uh, will fit into it. And this is just general operating dollars. We're, we're not even talking about the police budget. This is going to impact our generating operating dollars. So that means, uh, when you talked about sidewalk plowing, that is why I anticipate uh, public works leadership to come forward with a report that says it's going to cost five trillion dollars and the sky will fall if you do municipal sidewalk plowing. Because legit, because we have to pay out for this one department, the Minneapolis Police Department, we are not in the space to do any new programs. That's literally what Robert shared, the budget director last week. He was like, no new programs, like a sidewalk clown program. Because we got to pay for all the settlements, the misconduct, liability, workers' comps for this one department. Not even including the consent decree. So that is something that's concerning. And um, my office is working with council member Koski, who has the budget uh, committee to really look at how are we proactively, instead of waiting until Mayor Fry's releases budget? Because we're, we hold the purse of the city. Like, we actually hold the bag of the city. Like, we should be doing a full-on analysis of where is our money? Like, how is money currently be alloc- being allocated in our various departments, especially around full, uh, full-time employees? So we're going to be bringing something forward to council tomorrow to really give us that fuller picture. Um, so that we can make more proactive decisions versus like waiting until December to make budget allocations. Um, but I've also always said, if there was a way to tie the cost of the consent decree directly to the police budget that sits at two hundred million dollars, we should be doing that. This shouldn't, the cost of this consent decree and all police misconduct should not be having to be pulled from the larger general budget, which means that we can't uh, you know, get nice things like sidewalk plowing or uh, what you're going to hear. Because my office, as I mentioned, is advocating for our housing levy, a full public housing levy. Oh, we can't fully fund public housing because we got to pay for all the stuff that the policing did for ten plus years. Again, it's like, it's residents. And that's a problem. So if we actually tie their expenses to their budget, that frees up the general operating dollars that we can do or, or use for the actual things that residents need, the services that they're constantly telling us that we're not providing. Uh, to raise the quality of those services. Um, so that's my charge. Um, you know, using again, that's our oversight capabilities while we hold the bag. So we need to be proactively figuring out how our purse is looking, how the change is looking inside that purse, because it's looking real light right now. Um, okay, let's figure out how do we pour some more dollars into that? And then oversight, let's figure out, okay, yes, what is that process? Where, what budget needs to be reconfigured so that we can actually have a larger pool of resources to support these new initiatives that our residents have been asking us to lead on and they want to see action on and that we need to deliver on.
So I've been reading up on the deliberations over the, in the public engagement over the third precinct. And it seems clear that the city has either botched engagement or had never intended to do any real engagement. That seems clear. But my question for you is like, should there be a third precinct building? Uh, I've heard like Andrew Johnson, I think Cam Gordon mentioning like, maybe a series of um, multiple buildings around the third precinct, like ultimately without like, you know, deciding this is what Robin wants and this is what's going to happen. Like, what, what, what do you envision as the solution for MPD having a, a site or multiple sites in the third precinct?
Um, so what I heard or where I've taken my leadership from or what's been my north star in this conversation has been the community. The community has been very consistent that um, they do not want to see a third precinct. Um, and, and, and the current traditional policing sense. Um, and that has been tied to demands for, we need to actually be delivering on a comprehensive public safety model before we start talking about facilities. But in light of that, um, my office went to every single community engagement session around the third precinct that was attended by six hundred and fifty over uh, residents. Who said very loud and clear that the two choices, one, the old building that's in Ward nine and the new proposed location that would be in my ward, um, basically in Seaworth. Um, that those are false choices. Um, and that they don't want either choice. Instead, they want the city to uh, be committed to starting a process over and to then remove themselves from uh, leading that process because per usual, we show that we're trifling and we can't ever do nothing like morally correct. Um, or even procedurally cor- correct. So, um, let's remove y'all. Let's do an independent community engagement, which is what the community always asks for. Um, and that they decided to not do. Um, and we, y'all focus then on actualizing that comprehensive public safety system with your new commissioner, um, which is his sole job right now to do that. So that's what I've supported. I don't think, you know, or support the false choices. Um, I, you know, have been an advocate for a decentralized model. In fact, I brought forward a legislative directive last fall. Um, and we got our first presentation on this from um, the Office of Performance and Innovation, uh, by Director, uh, Brian Smith. Early this year around, what does it look like to do a decentralization of our public uh, safety facilities? Um, and we brought forward a follow-up legislative directive just last month that asked for additional analyses on that. Because again, residents are asking for that. Um, especially in line of like, they're not stupid. They know, based off of our current police contract, most officers, you have to spend, what, seventy percent of, or seventy percent of our current uh, police workforce has to be out on patrol. So they're not sitting in some large building, you know, just shuffling papers. They are outside. They're supposed to be catching folks and, you know, checking on things. Um, so why do you need a multimillion dollar facility, new facility to do that? Also, they recognize that we are several hundred officers short from the charter minimum. So why are we building new multimillion dollar facilities uh, for workforce that doesn't warrant such large, you know, facilities? And also, we already have most of our facilities right now um, at the city is used by officers. So you have space. You can go and, and merge buildings with other precincts. There is nothing in our charter that mandates that we have to have five precincts right now. Um, and then I want to emphasize the comprehensive public safety part. What council members like myself and others have been uh, really uplifting is we need to fully develop and professionalize our unarmed safety workforce, like our violence interrupters, our BCR folks, you know, nine one one. Um, we're trying to also grow that workforce. Right now, OPI, the Office of Performance and Innovation, they're doing analysis of other problem nature calls that will come with their respective pilots that will add new type of crisis responders to our Office of Community Safety. These people need space. Right now, they don't have space. So if we're going to be looking at, you know, doing facility creation or building new buildings, it should be in light of accommodating this other growing workforce that's also crucial to um, the success and effectiveness of our overall public safety system. Um, those conversations have not been taken serious. Our office again has led um, on delivering legislative actions to move that conversation forward. And tangent, again, with our community members and shout out to, you know, Sew- Sewer Neighborhood Group that passed a resolution asking the city to move forward on a decentralized model. And that's what we're going to keep doing. I'm, I'm over the third precinct piece. The community has made it loud and clear that that, the city's vision, actually, let me not say. Mayor Fry's vision for um, the third precinct that he, you know, sends out interim chief Heather uh, Chief Operating Officer Heather Johnson to tell to the community instead of himself. No, community does not want that. They made that clear. Um, at least those in the third precinct who will be most impacted by this. Instead, let's deliver on this comprehensive model. Let's revisit and reevaluate our current facility structure so that it's accommodating this unarmed uh, workforce and our overall new uh, pathway forward around how we're doing comprehensive public safety sys- uh, public safety in our city.
So I, I saw a tweet right before we started from uh, uh, council member Chugtie. That uh, she and I forget who else about rent stabilization, they're going to bring something tomorrow to the city council. I don't know if this episode is going to be out tomorrow, so this may be old news by uh, the time people hear it. So on the, the details, I think I saw on your website, three percent with no exceptions. And I wonder, like, if there was no exemption for new construction and we saw a precipitous drop in new housing, would that be a bad thing? Would that be a good thing? Like, what, what is your position there?
Yeah, I know that we've often heard that characterization in light of what happened in St. Paul after they passed um, rent control and one of the strongest rent control policies in the country that had the three percent no exemptions. I mean, I would say that's a mischaracterization. We're often told our own city staff deliver um, a very suspect uh, report that said that housing production will substantially be decreased if we move forward with uh, that particular policy. Um, that was also supported by our, you know, renter-led uh, work group that the city asked for, that Mayor Fry asked for. Um, but I, you know, want to highlight, it wasn't uh, just an organic drop in production. Developers intentionally let a capital strike, uh, because developers do not want to uh, regulate themselves. They do not want to be regulated. Um, they want to be able to have full discretion on how the private housing market works. And they want to do so without any type of like regulatory intervention. Um, and that is why we have the issues that we have. And they are literally allergic and resistant to even the barest minimums of, we're not even talking about strong rent control. But modest, you know, um, rental protections that council members have advocated for, like, you know, policies or screenings and security deposits, even TOPA. Again, modest uh, regulations. These all were fought heavily uh, um, against by developers. Um, so, you know, it just shows again why we need to be committed um, to moving forward policies like strong rent control, like a fully funded public housing levy, um, to ensure that we are actually centering the needs of renters, of homeowners. Working class people who are being priced out of our current housing um, system. And I'm thankful that we have council members like Chuck tie, who uh, works to be beholden by the people and not developers to deliver on those things. Um, but I want to make sure that we know the production or the capital strike that happened in light of uh, you know, St. Paul passing rent control, that was intentional. And then those developers came back in twenty twenty two, it was a record year for multifamily housing construction permits in St. Paul. So again, like, they will always throw some type of like capital tantrum anytime, you know, uh, elected officials attempt to take meaningful action on, on working class issues. They did the same thing with uh, the fifteen minimum wage, which uh, we'll be getting a presentation on and count in the next couple of weeks from the Fed Reserve. When we passed fifteen um, back in twenty sixteen, sorry, twenty seventeen, all the big businesses was like, God, this will put us out of business. Target was like, no, we can't do it. We just can't do it. And they're still here. Like, they're fine. But now we're going to have a report uh, in the next several weeks by the Fed Reserve, which has consistently shown that they've been supportive of like working class issues. Uh, I hope people note that was me speaking very sarcastically of them, but uh, like.
I'm not going to allow sarcasm on the Wedge Life podcast. I'm not going to allow sarcasm on the Wedge Live podcast. I won't allow it.
You you will or you won't, or is there like a mark of the corner?
I'm very, I'm very sarcastic. People have a hard time figuring out what I mean. So I was joking.
That's the case, yeah. But they're about to come back and tell us like 15 was horrible. It hurt jobs. And it does not have any consideration of the entire pandemic. Like, are you being for real right now? Um y'all are 10 years late. People actually don't need 15 anymore. We need like 20, $25 or more right now, like in order to live in these expensive ass cities. Like, so again, I I'm I'm not really phased by what developers say. They're always going to be like, anything you do will hurt us. It faint on the couch. And then it's just like, okay, cool, you do that. We need to serve the people who elected us and who are being priced out of their housing, who are working two, three jobs to cover rent, um who are struggling to stay housed. We need to deliver on policies that is going to protect them and not your profits.
Here's a low key issue that I found on your website, public hearings. You have an idea to shift public hearings to the evening and weekend hours to allow easier participation by residents in key city decisions. So I've got a two part follow up on this very low key uh issue. What kind, what kinds of public hearings do you imagine shifting to evenings and weekends? Cause there there's a lot of like routine kind of public hearings and then there are some more substantial, like we're going to pass a big new law kind of public hearing. So would you shift all of them? And like, this would extend your time commitment uh as city council members, you know, showing up on weekends, evenings. I know there are some council members who really just hate when the meetings go too long. So what kinds of public hearings do you imagine? Some? All?
I think you highlighted, you know, when it comes to to policies like big ordinances, it's very clear that we have a crappy practice of when we're moving forward to ordinance, at least this year. Um, the public is like notified like 48 hours and then are expected to come to a public hearing, which I think everyone knows is theatrics. By the time you get to a public hearing, because we have a public hearing and then there's immediately afterward a vote on the policy typically. People are like, you already made your decisions. There's no space for you to take into consideration what we just told you to make amendments and to come back with a revised uh version. So why are you wasting our time? Like, you really don't take community or public engagement serious if you're doing it in this way. Um so, you know, I think definitely the way in which we do community engagement around ordinances needs to be changed and transformed. Um and you uh you know, this is why my office worked with uh Council Pomisano, uh Council Vice President Pomisano, uh I believe now a month ago where we uh passed uh a motion for our legislative department um to finally do the work of building out our legislative department. Um and to come back with, you know, monthly um updates around what that will look like. And one big piece of that will be having our um legislative staff come back with recommendations around how do we do community engagement? Um and how does that tie into our boards and commissions in our current legislative processes? So what does it look like to do better uh community engagement and liaison with the executive staff? Because I want to note that like there is inconsistent and non-standardized uh community engagement practices amongst all the city departments. Um especially, I know y'all follow this, the Wedge Live, um the Wedge Live has extensively covered the varying, you know, uh enactions of community engagement and public works, for instance. You will have projects like Hennepin Ave around the 24 bus lanes that had tons of comments, same with the East Phillips Farm. That project got over a thousand supportive comments and then literally you'll have public works be like, oh, that's great. We're going to do this instead. And it's just like, again, what was the point of that? So um we're working with uh our legislative uh staff um as we're formalizing our legislative department and getting our policies. Um, you know, that's going to structure it. Um and I know this is often the unsexy piece about how government operates, but I cannot tell you how excited I am about us finally leading on the creation of a legislative department and strengthening it, fully funding it and making sure that it's supporting council members like myself or those all across the political spectrum that's here to do the work on behalf of their constituents. And even if that work is in conflict with what the mayor wants and because the mayor listens to the downtown councilor Steve Kramer, I don't know how that works with Steve Kramer retiring. I'm pretty sure he's going to be part of many more advisory boards. But nevertheless, like, we're here to do the work of our constituents and for far too long, we have not had infrastructure to support us in the pre legislative work and the legislative work and making sure public engagement is tied to every phase of that work. Um and doing so authentically and not wasting people's time. But I'm super excited to move us in a direction where we do take evening meetings. And it's okay, we get paid over a hundred thousand dollars. You could take an evening meeting. If you have a problem with staying longer, which we highlight, I mean, you highlighted of staying more, staying longer than like two hours for a discussion based committee, at that point, you should really reevaluate if this is the right job for you. Um and maybe start looking for other things like that does not take, you know, extensive discussion around like legislative priorities. But if you are interested in this, we should be looking at like evening meetings because that's when working class people are available. We saw that with our most recent budget um uh process where we had tens of dozens of of residents. We had eight year olds, children testifying. We had for the first time ever college students coming to testify because we clearly moved our public hearing to the evening. And that was a game changer. I would love to see more babies and elementary school students and college students, seniors, um to be able to come and partake in our public hearings and give us feedback on the policies and and budget decisions that we're making. So I'm really excited to move forward in that. And when you talked about weekend meetings, most of us, most of us who are like doing our jobs, we do weekend events all the time. Like there is not a strict nine to five, Monday through Friday with this work. And some council members have been able to structure it as so, but you know, for the rest of us, typically it is, you know, Monday through Sunday. Like the business of the city does not stay within nine to five traditional business hours. Um so you know, if we really want to welcome working class people to participate um in our local democracy, we need to be structuring our city business around that to let them do that.
Here's a quick one, because we're going long. It is the second part, the second part of my follow up to the public hearing thing. Have you ever heard something at a public hearing that changed your mind? And I ask this question because I don't know if I've ever heard anything in a public hearing that changed my mind. Like you usually go in and I have strong opinions. I come in, I've I've read some things about it. And you as a council member, I'm sure you you do a lot of preparation ahead of the public hearing. Like, can you think of a time when someone said something at a public hearing? You're like, wow, I had never thought of it that way. I will maybe change my vote here or I'll change something about this.
Yeah, I think a recent example of that was uh when you talk about non sexy things, like one of the things that we do is like, you know, approve, review and approve assessments um by the public works when they're doing, you know, different infrastructure or or planning designs, if they got to tear up sidewalks and things of that nature. That's usually, there's an assessment that, you know, we put in um on on the city side, but that we also um, you know, leverage towards homeowners. Um or or, you know, basically the residents, even if you're a renter, like that that assessment is passed on to the owner of your property, which we often see gets passed down to renters. Um so nevertheless, we had a recent um assessment meeting, um because we have public hearings for those. Um and the public works, the infrastructure committee, and typically they seem pretty straightforward. We do have residents that often, you know, talk about the struggles of having to have this bill um and and the impacts of that, because these are ordinary people uh for all sorts of projects that the city is doing. Um and usually like, you know, committee leadership at have those residents connect with um uh staff um afterwards. But there was assessment one that really uh got our attention. And I would name again, like the external piece. It was very clear, these organ- um these uh community members uh organized before that public he- uh public meeting. And I do know it was part uh uh the assessment um proposal we were evaluating was based in North Minneapolis. So it was a really diverse group of residents who were literally talking about, you know, we just got a assessment, you know, recently, like it feels like we're being double taxed. And they talked about the impacts of being, you know, black and brown homeowners, like people do not have just like discretionary money like that to be covering like costs like this, especially if we're doing them multiple times a year. And I can't recall what the specific assessment thing, but again, usually we have approved those without question, without any debate. But I do know that was the first time where we were like, whoa, okay, we need to reevaluate like some of our assessment protocols. And um I believe there was a number of council members that were in discussion of bringing for a legislative directive to uh get more information on how we can rectify that, um especially in light of wanting to be equitable in how we do assessments. Um so I I I give credit to those neighbors who showed up. Again, it's in the mid, it's at 1:30, you know, in the middle of the day. Some of them have jobs. Some of them probably had, you know, tons of errands that they had to, you know, do. And they had to come to City Hall and be like, this hurts me financially, what you're doing. Do something about it. Don't just approve it. Don't rubber stamp it. Um so that was one time where I was like, oh, wait, no, 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 no. We gotta do something.
Okay, we're we're coming into the homestretch. I'm going to ask you two related questions. What are you hopeful about? And what is your biggest fear for the city? So a hope and a fear.
I'm I'm hopeful a lot. I'm hopeful about coming into our next term with hopefully um more allies who actually care about working class people. So I'm super excited about Soren's um campaign. Um and hopefully having um leadership in Ward Eight that really cares about the issues that so many working class people across the city do, like all folks want to have clean air. People want to make sure their neighbors are housed. Uh people want to make sure our sidewalks are in good condition and are safe regardless if it's in the wintertime or in summer. Like those are the things that, you know, your normal average uh resident want and they have not been given um in places like Ward Eight. So I'm really excited for the vision um that Soren is bringing. I'm excited for Areen. Um so the idea of having additional allies um to come forward, so we can have our own experience of a trifecta where we saw, you know, progressive elected leaders at the state be able to hold um the line um on so many critical issues, critical issues that, you know, external groups have been spending 20 plus years organizing around like driver's license for all and restore the vote. Those were finally realized when you had a progressive majority in the trifecta. So I'm really excited about us being able to do similar things at the local level with a few more friends on council. Um and you know, be able to push back against the eh pro establishment. Let's just keep everything uh you know, copasthetic and as they are, because there is nothing really wrong Fry administration. That's what that is. Um so I'm excited about that and hopeful for that. And then what I'm fearful of, um I I we're going to a election cycle. Again, we'll name that. And I'm fearful um that we will see at some point the ramping up of white fear again around the state of our city. We're already seeing it and we're ways around the trifecta, like people literally was trying to pull really a bunch of shit out their ass about why marijuana legalization will just like cause all sorts of just weird bad things. It was just like, really weed? Weed is going to be the downfall of us, but okay. Um like, I'm nervous that we're going to see similar things, like they can't use crime in the way that they did in 2021 or Law and Order. So what will they do this time? Will they paint unhoused neighbors as the the key issue of do you support, you know, tenant camps or not, homeless people or not? Like, I I'm really, um, I'm not fearful, but because we could navigate that. But I'm I'm very interested of how the conservatives, that's often emboldened by, you know, the Fry type of machinery. Um, what are they going to use? What issue? What person, marginalized persons? Um are they going to use to try to say, we don't need real change? We don't need leaders committed to creating real change inside the city hall. The status quo that you have is as good as it's going to get and you should be happy with it. So I am interested to see what they pull up with and excited to like throw these political hands for the future that we all need and deserve, where every person in our city have housing, clean air, good sidewalks, good jobs, regardless of your race, your ethnicity, nationality, your religion, whatever the case be. You all deserve that. And for far too long, Minneapolis is giving you the, not even various minimums, the bar is in hell. So I'm very excited to raise that bar.
Did you come prepared with recommendations? Do you have recommendations to offer the audience? Something you enjoy, could be anything.
Oh, my God. So everyone knows, like, I'm super protective of my like Zumba time. That is like my, oh, I love Zumba. Zumba with Val Florentine specifically. Uh we'd be posted up at North Market on Mondays and Fridays, six to seven. And it's just beautiful. It's a multiracial bunch of like folks posted up in North Minneapolis where apparently it's like crime galore. And you just see a bunch of residents, babies, just dancing and being joyful together and taking care of their bodies and their health in a very collective way. And it's the most beautiful, like spiritually nourishing thing. Um so I love that. Monday and Fridays, usually I tell my team, like, if it's something on, you know, six o'clock on a Monday and Friday, you better cancel it or reschedule it, because I gotta go to my Zumba. So Zumba at North Market with Val is a must like experience in Minneapolis. And and if folks want to come Zumba with me, like, come, come through, come through.
Are we, are we allowed to uh pester you with uh your work, work issues, uh questions about the city? Uh office hours with uh Councilmember Wonsley during Zumba?
Absolutely not. I will nicely and politely give you a business card and say, yo, send me an email. My staff is going to get to you and I credit my staff. My staff are super responsive. They are going to get back to you. But that's what you gonna get because my Z- no, no, please don't. Please don't.
It's a sanctified time. Don't bother.
Yes, you are going to get the side eye from your council member, like, I'm I'm sorry, what, what's happening? And it's weird. I'm like sitting there sweaty and stuff and you, yeah, okay, yeah. But yes, if you do not want to have a constituent request experience with your council member, come through to Zumba with Val.
And my my guest today has been Councilmember Robin Wonsley, who's running for reelection to the Minneapolis City Council in War Two. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Sean.